This is the Salina City Commission meeting for January 14, 2019. We'll have, this is the call of order, and we'll have a roll call, please.
Mayor Ryan.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hay.
Here.
Commissioner Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Here.
If you're able, would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all so much. We are up to item three, we're ready for words and proclamations, 3.1.
Item 3.1, the day of January 21, 2019, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Commemoration Day in the city of Salina, Ramona Malone, Martin Luther King Ad hoc Committee Member, will read the proclamation.
Welcome, Ms. Malone.
Good afternoon, I love the sound of that, Ramona Malone, because I'm here, so it's wonderful. Good afternoon, and thank you for allowing us this opportunity. Proclamation honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., 2019, whereas the 21st day of January is the birthday anniversary of the late Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and whereas Dr. King stood before the entire world as a man of peace, champion of human dignity, and an example of love and brotherhood, and whereas the cities, the citizens of Salina do recognize Dr. King's contribution to the good of all humankind, and they do desire to perpetuate and implement the ideals expressed in his dream of peace and harmony among all individuals, and whereas in paying tribute to Dr. King, we are reminded that the duty lies with each of us to fulfill the vision of his life's work. Let us use our time, talents, and resources to give back to our community and help those less fortunate than us. Particularly today, let us not forget Dr. King's own tireless spirit and efforts as we work, celebrate, and pray alongside people of all backgrounds. As one people, let us rediscover the bonds of love and loyalty that bring us together as Americans and as people who share a common humanity. Now therefore, I, Carl Ryan, Mayor of the city of Salina, do hereby proclaim the day of January 21, 2019, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Commemoration Day, and urge that every citizen of Salina join me in extending recognition and honor to the memory of this great leader of humankind. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Salina, Kansas to be affixed this day, January 14, 2019. Carl Ryan, Mayor, City of Salina.
Thank you, Ms. Malone.
Thank you.
Are there events or some special things scheduled for this?
We do have a flyer listing the events that will be happening, and I would like to present those, and a commemorative button to each of the commissioners at this time. It begins with today's event, and then on Saturday, there is a potluck dinner at Sunrise Presbyterian Church, which is the host church for the event, and then Sunday afternoon at 3:30 PM is the citywide celebration, which will be incredible, if I must say. And then on Monday is the final event, which is a youth event, a youth-centered event held at St. John's Missionary Baptist Church at noon, and that's a one-hour event, so I will present these to you at this time.
Come on out, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ramona.
Thank you. And I know your hands are full, but please.
Yes.
And there's the proclamation for you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Our next order of business is the Citizens Forum. This is an opportunity for anybody that would like to address the commission on any subject matter not on the agenda to come up and speak. Is there anyone that would like to address us today? There being none, we'll move on to public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time, I believe we have none. Move us forward to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of January 7, 2019. Item 6.2, approve resolution number 19-7655, appointing members to the Housing Authority Board, Human Relations Commission, Salina Community Economic Development Organization and Solid Waste Management Committee. Item 6.3, approve resolution number 19-7654, authorizing the mayor to execute a vault closure agreement allowing for closure of an underground sidewalk vault and the public right-of-way located at 145 South Santa Fe Avenue, Lot 131, with Grassroots Efforts LLC. And item 6.4, approve resolution number 19-7652, appointing members to the Planning Commission to serve on the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Heritage Commission.
Is there, are there any items that any commissioner would like to pull out for discussion? There being none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mayor Ryan, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those items will pass 5-0. Administration, 7.1.
Item 7.1, second reading ordinance number 19-10990, amending Salina Code Section 42-503 pertaining to electronic changeable copy signs, and amending Section 42-516 pertaining to signs in the A1 District.
Ordinance number 1910990 was passed on first reading on January 7, 2019. Since that time, no comments have been received. Is there anyone that would wish to comment on it at this time? There being none, we'll bring it back up here for a roll call.
I think we probably need to have a motion.
Let's have a first and a second, I guess, first.
Mayor Ryan, I move that we approve on second reading, ordinance number 19-10990.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, we'll have a roll call.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hay.
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Aye.
Mayor Ryan.
Aye. That will pass 5-0. 7.2.
Item 7.2, award contract for replacement of Salina Community Theater HVAC units.
Good afternoon. The current units on the top of the Salina Community Theater have reached the end of their lifespan, and per the Community Theater Maintenance and Operating Agreement dated December 17, 2007, Section 2, City Duties, the city of Salina is responsible for all necessary maintenance, repair, and replacement of plumbing and plumbing fixtures, heating and air conditioning systems, electrical systems not associated with theater production, the marquee, and the roof. Bids are received from Calabrese, Systems 4, Pestinger, and Glassman. Calabrese's bid did not include multiple items specified in the bid request, so it has been deemed non-responsive by the facility's maintenance supervisor. Staff would recommend awarding the contract for the replacement of a 30-ton rooftop unit in a 5-ton rooftop unit at the Salina Community Theater to Systems 4 in the amount of $50,550.
Questions for Mr. Cotton?
I have, I have just a few. Did this, did the $50,550, did that fall within the budgeted amount for the 2019 capital improvement?
It was, it was, it was over by about $4,000, ma'am.
Okay. And then just a question, just generally, do we have any maintenance and operating agreements with any other nonprofit entities in the city?
We have Troy Reiner come up, he's our facilities operations supervisor, he's over maintenance of all facilities for the city, he can answer us some questions.
Yes, we have an agreement with the Salina Arts Center as well.
Do we, is that like a similar scope in terms of replacement of HVAC, roof, and things like that?
Yeah, it's, it is similar in some aspects, they're written a little bit differently, but yeah, we have obligations to both.
Okay, gotcha, but, okay. And then I did, I did review a copy of the agreement with the community theater, and I noticed that we receive every year $3,000 from the community theater as, you know, valid toward all the things we provide, and do we have any sense of what we are actually providing for the community theater in terms of, I mean, obviously $3,000 isn't going to cover it, because we, we do all the utilities and stuff too, correct?
Yes, ma'am, last year, by our estimates, the city spent $43,231.50 in services for the community theater.
Okay, so, okay, so that is about a $40,000 a year subsidy just for general operating expenses for the community theater, and then we have these, these capital improvements on top of that, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
You're correct, it wouldn't be maintenance rather than capital improvements, we, capital improvement, they conducted a capital improvement campaign, but we have repairs to capital items, which is what we have today.
Right, and then I guess my, my final question is, I, I could have sworn, have we dealt with the roof already, or is that something that's coming up? Wasn't there a problem with some leaking?
We, we are currently in the process of, what we call it, finishing off the building.
Yes.
There were a couple of things that when the facility was remodeled several years ago, it wasn't actually finished, and our, we have, Troy discovered it and is actually working hard to get it fixed.
Thank you, Troy, for all, all the work you do on behalf of the community theater, I really appreciate that, and this may not be the, you know, the time or the place to go into it, but I think this would, you know, maybe merit a further discussion at some point in terms of, you know, what our investment is, both annually and in terms of capital improvements that we have made and that we're going to be expected to make, because this, I think this agreement runs through 2057, so we've, we've got, we've got a lot of years of roof replacements and plumbing and water bills and electrical bills and all kinds of things, so.
Given the terms of the current agreement, that would be correct, yes.
Right, so, at any rate, that's just something I would, at another time, like to review.
I had one. I had one quick question. When someone like Calabrese's bid comes in and it doesn't meet the, the threshold to be accepted, are they notified of that, just out of courtesy, or, okay, I just was curious how we handled that. Anything else for staff? Thank you, gentlemen. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this item? There being none, we'll bring it back up here for further discussion, or is there a motion?
Mayor Ryan, I move that we award the contract for replacement of Salina Community Theater HVAC units to Systems 4 in the amount of $50,550.
Second. Been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item will pass 5-0.
Item 7.3, first reading ordinance number 19-10991, amending Chapter 8, Article 1, Division 3 of the Salina Code by amending Sections 8-1-3-7, 712.1, and 8-1-3-7-23.1 of the 2012 UPC by adding exceptions for allowing air testing of PVC drain and vent piping.
Mr. Pilcher.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Mayor Ryan. Start out with a little background here. Drain waste, drain waste vent piping, or DWV piping, as we'll refer to it from now on, is piping in the drainage, is, excuse me, piping is the drainage system installed in a structure to carry waste from the fixtures to the building sewer. It also provides venting to the system for proper drainage. DWV piping is most commonly installed using PVC because of the ease of installation and cost of material. Other options include copper or cast iron. The 2012 Uniform Plumbing Code, UPC, includes Sections 712.1 and 723.3, which are in Attachment A, that require drain waste, drain waste vent DWV piping with either air or water, but prohibits the testing of PVC piping with air. Testing is required to ensure that drain and vent piping does not leak sewage or sewer gases into the buildings they serve and the ground surrounding it. The test for PVC, as it stands now, is made by filling the system with water and visually inspecting each joint for leaks. UPC allows air testing on other types of piping such as copper or cast iron in Section 712.3, and that's also in Attachment A. In past code adoptions, the UPC has been amended to eliminate the need for PVC DWV piping, so we didn't, in the past code cycles, we hadn't required testing at all, but in the last code cycle effective April 1, 2017, that amendment was eliminated with approval of the BAB making testing mandatory for PVC piping. Historically, it was thought that PVC had less of a chance of leaking, but at, as time and familiarity with material has progressed, local industry professionals have recognized that that too needs tested, like copper and cast iron pipes. The reasoning behind the codes not allowing air testing is because air is compressible and can cause a dangerous situation if pipe is ruptured or if a test plug blows out under pressure. Water is the test that codes require, because water is not a compressible gas, or not compressible and does not have the same danger as air testing. The main manufacturers of PVC pipe used in Salina are Spears Manufacturing and Charlotte Manufacturing, both of which expressly prohibit air testing, that's in Attachments B and C as some documentation from them, citing examples as low as 3.5 PSI, causing test plugs to blow out and resulting in injury. In addition, the Plastic Pipe and Fittings Association, PPFA, policy on testing plastic pipe and fittings installations with compressed gas states PVC is not to be tested or used with compressed air or gases, and that's Attachment D. Staff has looked into neighboring communities and what their code allows with DWV pipe testing, and it'd be as follows, Concordia, Manhattan, and Hayes, all are water only. Wichita does have a local amendment for air testing down there. In speaking with OSHA, the Occupational Safety and Health Administration representative, Ryan Hodge, on the matter, he states that if OSHA, if an OSHA inspector arrived on site due to an incident, further investigating, including manufacturer standards, model building codes, and industry practices, would come into play on whether or not a violation would be cited. He states that if an incident, accident occurred, a citation could be issued regardless of local building code. The current request, on October 24, 2018, staff received a code amendment, it's Attachment E, from Mark Smith of Mark Smith Plumbing, requesting approval to administer air testing for PVC DWV systems. Reasoning behind that were twofold, they wanted to alleviate the necessity to haul water for properties that do not have water on site. A lot of new construction properties don't have their water service in, so you have to haul water or, or ask to borrow it from a neighboring property. Testing of PVC with water and cold weather can cause more work cleaning out or treating traps to avoid freezing. Whenever you let the water out of the system, there's still water in the traps, so the plumbers would have to treat them, treat the traps with antifreeze or blow the traps out to avoid those traps freezing and possibly cause some damage to their work. Building Advisory Board met on November 13 and December 11 to discuss the amendment requests, and staff provided them with the same information covered above on model codes, neighboring communities, pipe manufacturers, and OSHA. There was much discussion on the safety concerns of the pipe, of pipe explosion and plug blowout using air testing on PVC due to the potential dangerous nature of compressed air. Staff presented great concerns for safety and reiterated the concerns presented via code, manufacturers, and OSHA. As a discussion of the BAB meeting leaned toward, leaned toward the code amendment allowing air pressure testing, staff offered up a possible mitigation method. Staff suggested that the installation of a pressure relief valve on the testing apparatus to limit the maximum pressure put into the pipe at 10 PSI and a maximum test pressure of 5 PSI in accordance with UPC 712.3. In addition, no inspection would be passed without a relief valve in place. In addition, no inspection would be passed without a relief valve in place. The idea behind the relief valve is to make the test safer and to ensure that a less experienced plumber would not be able to pressurize the pipe at a high level and cause an even greater risk to themselves or those around them. Manufacturers do not have a provision in their exception, or exception, in their data to use a relief valve on, on their test pipe. After reviewing all the information, the board voted seven to three to recommend to the City Commission an amendment to add an exception to the UPC testing requirements to allow for air testing with the pressure relief valve. While the relief valve installation may make the air compression test safer, staff remains unsupportive of the amendment due to the unreliable nature of this method and significant safety concerns still associated with this method. There is no fiscal note associated with this request. City Commission today, proposed action is also consistent with the following goals on the following, in the city's, city strategic plan, excuse me. City will create a community of mixed use, quality development and redevelopment. City will provide the highest quality of services, consistent with governing body direction, available resources, and staff commitment to quality. Goal number four, city will maintain growth development policies that are updated to reflect current conditions and desired growth direction. Action today, vote to adopt ordinance number 1910991, amending the 2012 Uniform Plumbing Code to provide a provision for testing, air testing PVC drain waste and vent piping. Vote to adopt ordinance number 1910991 with amendments as directed by the City Commission, amending the 2012 Uniform Plumbing Code, or vote to deny amendment request to keep the testing requirements written, as written, in the 2012 Uniform Plumbing Code. As previously reported, the board voted seven to three to recommend the City Commission an amendment to add an exception to the PVC testing requirements to allow for air testing with the use of pressure relief valve. Due to potential safety hazards and conformance with model codes and manufacturer standards, staff supports option number three. I'd be happy to answer questions you might have.
Questions?
I had a couple of questions. One, were there any other plumbers that came forward with the same request besides Mr. Smith?
I've heard comments on both sides.
Okay.
I've had some that said they weren't in favor of it and, and others that were as well.
Then also, you did state that the manufacturers prohibited the air testing, and you did say there wasn't a provision in that to use the relief valve.
There is not.
Okay. One final question. If OSHA came in due to an incident and stated that there could be a citation, would that citation be given to the plumbing company, or would that be?
Yes.
Who would? Okay.
Well, I think, no matter how many holiday ends I sleep in, I'm not going to be able to argue this from a professional experience, but the UPC says, "Don't do it." The manufacturer says, "Don't do it." And the Plastic Pipe and Fittings Association, assume as the trade group says, "Don't do it."
Right.
And the accident that the manufacturer cited occurred at a pressure lower than what these valves would protect us against.
That's correct.
I just don't see the logic for doing it. I'm not really sure that this action would conform with our strategic plan because if, if it's an unsafe practice, then that's not quality development and goal number one. Our highest quality of services should be protect people who are buying these properties, not to just make it easier. And I'm assuming that this pipe has been used in our climate and people have been building on properties before, so someone must have come up with a way around this. And I don't know if we, if it applies to goal number four. If this development policy is, it wouldn't be updated in that the, excuse me, the UPC is basically telling us, excuse me, "Don't do it." I just, so I would agree with the staff's recommendation to deny the code amendment.
Just to clarify a little bit, the Uniform Plumbing Code does require water testing. Another option that staff has allowed them to do is to do smoke testing, which does not introduce pressure onto the pipe. If it is, it's very, very minimal. It just allows a blower to run, run through the piping system, and you can inspect each joint at that weight. You look for, you look for water drips or smoke. And so, we do allow them to do that as well, instead of water, just as a, as another helpful way to do it in the wintertime.
I guess that's, that's where it gets beyond my technical expertise. And only one plumber actually spoke to me about, he's a master plumber, and he said, "Don't do it." But that's one master plumber.
Other questions?
I think Dr. Davis pretty much stole my thunder in terms of when you've got OSHA, the pipe manufacturers, staff, the UPC, area cities, all saying, "Don't do it." You know, that, that makes a pretty compelling argument because on the other side, you've got the Board of Zoning Appeals and the City of Wichita, and maybe an isolated plumber or two. I guess my question is more for legal staff in terms of if we decide to exercise option number three, do we simply take no action, or do we affirm that we are taking no action, or do we have to physically, you know, make a statement that we're not adopting ordinance number 1910991?
That is the classic conundrum. I suppose all of the above work. I think it's a matter of the commission's pleasure as to how you wish to address the way, the issue that's been presented.
That's big hail.
Yeah.
Well, I can't decide that.
We're going to freestyle. It's okay.
Yeah, I cannot decide that for you from the standpoint of what you all might wish to do. It will certainly not be enacted if you don't entertain a motion to approve it. But I did not want to try to keep you from addressing it in whatever way you might wish.
Other questions? There being none, thank you, Mr. Pilcher. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this item? There being none, we'll bring it back up here for action or, or more discussion.
Try to make a motion here, at least that way we'll have it on record. Mayor Ryan, I move that we deny the code amendment request associated with ordinance 19-10991.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That will be denied. Five-oh. Seven point four. Mr. Schrag? Or Mr. Koach, sorry.
Item seven point four, consideration of single-use plastic bag regulation.
Mr. Koach.
Good evening. I will make this as painless as possible, but the City Commission last fall directed staff to gather information and present, present it for further consideration on the single-use plastic bag ban. It's a very timely topic. If you've been looking at the news feed recently, just in the past 24 hours, the new governor of New York, Andrew Cuomo, is also promoting a plastic bag ban and committed to putting stuff in their budget to make that come through, true. So, it's very timely. It's dominantly more active on the coasts. The Midwest is more conservative, and we have several states, which I'll go into, where they preempted plastic bag bans. Staff and city manager both have went through a lot of information. We've compiled it down to about 60 pages for your review. There's six pages of active conversation or dialect, and I propose to go through about three of it, just for the information of the audience as well as the TV audience, so they have the background. I've tried to present both sides of the issue. The recommendations go from one side to the other, so it will be at the pleasure of the commission, what you do with the information or the further direction that you give us. So, with that, I'll get started with this, and then we can have a discussion. A great deal of information was reviewed as part of the assignment. The most comprehensive article that I found was on Wikipedia, which has its pluses and minuses, but it had over 500 references, and I went through a lot of those. Just a brief explanation, it's started in the early 21st century. There was a global movement to phase out lightweight plastic bags. And we're talking about single-use plastic bags, those that you receive at the grocery store. Reusable bags are the commonly, the more heavyweight canvas bags, handles, you can reuse them, and/or the mesh or nylon bags that are reusable. So, when I talk about lightweight plastic bags or the plastic bag ban, I'm talking about the really lightweight ones. The ones you need to double up to carry your milk, so. They are commonly made of low-density polyethylene plastic, traditionally been used, or given free to customers when stores, when purchasing goods. They are considered strong, cheap, and hygienic way of transporting items. Problems associated with the plastic bags, bags include use of a non-renewable resource such as crude oil, gas, or coal, difficulties during disposal, and environmental impacts. Concurrently with the reduction in lightweight plastic bags, shops have introduced reusable shopping bags, and governments all over the world have taken action to ban the sale of lightweight bags, charge customers for lightweight bags, or generate taxes from the stores that sell them. As of January 1st of 2019, such bans have been introduced in 54 countries with varying degrees of enforcement, and 32 of those countries instead impose a charge per bag. Bans and charges have been enacted in some local jurisdictions, such as states, counties, territories, and cities. Some proponents have claimed plastic bags are more environmentally proven than alternative paper plastic or reusable bags and are a vital part of the economy. These constituents also claim plastic bags are such a small proportion of the overall waste stream that it doesn't make sense to single them out. So, it's, there are two strong lobbies, one for them and one against them. One is ban the bag, and the other one is bag the ban. So, it's, they've got their, their go-lines. Other opponents contend plastic bags don't cause, do cause major and minor ecological environmental issues. And within the article here, I included about a page and a half of the effects to wildlife, the environment, and water supplies. I'm not going to go through that, but two of the most popular methods of phasing out lightweight plastic bags, or charges, charges on the bags, or charges for reusable bags, and bans, straightforward bans. The charge strategy is said to have all the same results of a plastic bag reduction as a plastic bag ban, with the additional benefit of creating a new revenue source. In some cases, the revenues are retained by retailers, but in other instances, the revenues are shared with the governing entity for environmental mitigation efforts or projects. There is no national plastic bag fee or ban in the United States currently. However, the state of California, territories of American Samoa and Puerto Rico, have banned disposable bags. Over 200 counties and municipalities have enacted ordinances that impose fees on plastic bags or ban them outright, including all of the counties in Hawaii, so it's considered a statewide ban. Other attempts at banning plastics statewide have failed. For example, in Massachusetts, although most of the counties have enacted a ban. A few jurisdictions have chosen, chosen to implement a fee-only reports, approach to the bag reduction. On the flip side of that, there are actually 11 states that have passed laws preventing local municipalities from passing their own bans, and that is referred to as preemption. There are 11 of those states, Idaho, Arizona, Mississippi, and Florida, and several of our Midwest neighbors, Minnesota, Iowa, Missouri, Wisconsin, Michigan, and Indiana. So, a lot of Midwestern states choosing to preempt plastic bag bans. Some major retailers are voluntarily choosing to limit the plastic bags. Kroger, the nation's largest grocery chain, and this was surprising, announced in August 2018, it is taking the lead in the grocery industry by phasing out single-use plastic bags by 2025. It will start with its QFC stores around Seattle with the goal of using no plastic bags in those stores at some point next year. So, pretty active up in the Seattle area. The company said it will have plastic bag free at all of its nearly 2,800 stores by 2025. And this was the surprising part. That one company, Kroger, orders about 6 billion bags each year from, for its stores in 35 states and the District of Columbia, which cater to almost 9 million people daily. So, there's an awful lot of bags just from, from one producer. On the flip side of it, on the bag the ban site, they are quoting energy savings for manufacturing the bags, disposal advantages since they take so much more, so much less space in the landfills. They're more reusable and sanitary than cotton bags, and they claim that no oil is involved because most of them are produced with natural gas. And according to the, the plastic lobby, there are nearly 30,000 men and women employed in the plastic bag industry in the United States, so. There are no plastic, active plastic bag bans in Kansas. Lawrence, Kansas, has been the, the most vocal advocate discussing this plastic bag ban since 2015. They have yet to enact any ordinances. In the summer of 2018, a, another local board picked up the, the cause and announced that it would again be studying the issue, and this is their Sustainability Advisory Board. Three separate environmental groups in Lawrence have been strong advocates for a plastic bag ban. Prairie Village and other Kansas city began considering the plastic bag in 2000, bag ban in 2014, but just in April of 15, the city put discussions on hold and decided instead to focus on public education efforts to reduce the use of plastic bags. As part of the metropolitan area, there were strong concerns that banning bags in their community may force businesses to their neighbors. So, it was a market share thing. The city's legal council, council had previously researched whether the city may adopt an ordinance to prohibit local businesses from offering plastic bags to customers under Kansas law. A copy of the legal council's research memorandum was presented, back to you folks, in October, and more in-depth research has been concluded and is attached for your information to this briefing. The updated memorandum attempts to address the issue of whether the city may require retailers to charge their customers a fee for use of plastic bags. Provide a legal basis for prohibiting or requiring retailers to charge fees for single, single-use bags. With any bag ordinance, we think it's very important the commission includes specific details, definitions, and consequences to limit contentious activity and/or possible litigation. After a lot of research, presented four different ordinances, just as comparisons. One was from Homer, Alaska, for a simple, single-use plastic bag ordinance. Another one from Nevada City, California, which was a single-use plastic bag ordinance with minimum fees required for reusable bags, and they had a very strong section on definitions and the structure for policing this action. Salinas, California, single-use plastic bag ordinance, minimum fees, and then they also had a six-month grace period, which allowed businesses to adapt to the legislation. And then one from Boulder, Colorado, that not only imposed fees, but collected those, and the fees were actually shared between the retailer and the governing body, with the governing body using those for environmental projects. So, there's a lot of different ways the fees are being considered by, by various cities in the country. We have contacted the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, and they had their recently-retired bureau chief, as well as one of their environmentalists indicated that public information and education programs may be the most effective tool in actually reducing the plastic bags. Under the fiscal note, there are financial and social costs for implementing any such regulation. There are financial costs to retailers and to consumers to adapt to an alternative method of bagging purchases. The city may incur financial costs and staff time for development of all necessary ordinances, city code revisions, and legal review. There are possible legal fees associated with defense and possible litigation, or even statewide legislation. Quantifying these costs was not possible with all the possible. Quantifying these costs was not possible with all the possible implementation scenarios. We would want more information to develop an actual cost estimate for your review. On the other side of the issue, there are environmental and social costs for failure to take action and curb plastic bag consumption. Public involvement and input, um, we have not held a public hearing, and we have not held any local surveys. The issue has substantive financial and legal ramifications, and in-depth hearing process and public opinion surveys are recommended before further action, um, is considered. Subsequent to our meetings last fall, the city manager, Mike Scragg, had conversations with Greg Stevens about public input in general and the efforts of Talk Salina. Talk Salina is a local organization which could facilitate community discussions, um, with the plastic bag ban being, um, the topic. And then there's some more information, um, the actual communication is included for your review, but, uh, Talk Salina, um, was accepted into the network of civic luncheon lecture, uh, series at K-State, and they've conducted facilitator training in Salina for the past couple of years. As a result, they now have several local people who are trained with helping with events in Salina and other communities. Talk Salina events usually have a few modest costs to cover printing and marketing, um, and they use, would need to use facilities, um, but they are offering assistance in this effort. Conformance with the strategic plan, uh, the plastic bag ban, um, goal number three, the city will provide the highest quality of services consistent with governing body direction, available resources, and staff commitment to quality. And goal seven, the city will recognize the importance of a healthy community and its natural resources, and will make practical efforts to preserve them. As I mentioned before, um, there are several exhibits for your review, the ordinances from Homer, Alaska, Nevada, Nevada, California, Salinas, California, Boulder, Colorado. There are samples of the plastic bag images, just for your review. Updated legal memorandum, uh, with the legal city authority, and then also a highlighted legal review, um, prepared that has a lot of pertinent information for your consideration. With that being said, the recommendations, um, are to direct staff, number one, to direct staff to conduct public hearings and public opinion surveys, to collect additional data on public opinion, as well as the cost and benefits for each and possible implementation scenarios. Number two, direct staff to solicit a more detailed proposal from Talk Salina regarding them conducting a public deliberation process on this topic. Number three, provide staff direction regarding the preferred approach, either a plastic ban, a fee, or a combination of those, preferred deliberation process, requested deliverables for the city commission's future consideration. Number four, which is a combination of one, two, and three. Number five, direct us to take some other action, and number six is to take no action at this time. So, um, there's a whole lot of information for you to consider and discuss, and we stand for questions.
Questions?
Well, before we have questions, just looking out in the room here, I'm not the only one who's freezing in this room. It's, it could, it's maybe just two degrees, is it possible?
It's usually the other way around. It's usually too hot.
Sitting on my fingers and everything.
Yeah, same.
Well, unfortunately, yeah, the question answer got asked to fix the, what was that? So do we have questions for Mr. Koosh?
I don't have, of course, I, I think this is an area where a lot of folks would like to weigh in, and I actually like option four, which is to do all the above, as far as the I don't think we'd be ready just to sit here and enact a
Oh, yeah, I agree.
Proposal today, and so we're in the fact gathering, just the fact that we're gathering facts means we're, we're open to the idea.
I think the missing component for me is what the public thinks about this. Uh, it's a good idea, but, uh, does it really fit Salina? It fits places like Hawaii where those bags are going into the oceans, but I'd like to, um, know from the public how they feel about it. Is there, um, maybe if we're at the opinion stage, we should ask if there's anybody from the public that would like to address this item.
Could I ask one, just one very quick question? Um, would, would we, every year, we prepare, um, a letter for our legislators talking about, you know, important issues that are coming up for this. Just, I don't remember seeing that in our letter to the legislators for this year. Was it?
Not, not at all. Neither way.
Okay. And, and we do have a local government day scheduled for
Next Wednesday.
Next, a week from Wednesday. Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone from the public that'd like to comment on this?
John Blanchard, 1117 State Street. I will make this brief for you.
Didn't say anything.
Just a real, just a real quick consideration as you move forward through this, as you might, is just to, I, I'd like you to very seriously consider not adding a fee to, uh, the bags, just because we have a high number of low-income and, and individuals on fixed incomes that I think would be disproportionately, um, harmed by this, even, even if it's a small amount. What I would instead encourage is for you to, as you look at this, also consider the fact, consider the possibility, as Commissioner Hodges mentioned, of make, making that part of a legislative priority agenda item. And I would love to see you tag along with this, um, a position, a policy position on, um, starting to look at eliminating the sales tax on food. That would be a big thing to help. I know the new governor has a plan to step that down to 4%, but I think the more governing bodies that can help pass resolutions in support of actions like that, I think we can really start to do good and important work towards helping those on the lower end of the economic scale and, uh, bring about some equity in that, in that manner. But I, I do, uh, I, I will give you, um, credit for looking at things such as this and, and having a big perspective and a, and a big view of items that concern all of us. So thank you.
Is there anyone else? We'll bring it back here for further discussion, or?
I'm like Dr. Davis, I still like number four as a, as a combination of items one, two, three above, and you know, let's look at all, all of them and, you know, get the public's view of it, see what they say, and let it bring it back.
You're welcome to make a motion to that effect, your staff can, can see the writing on the wall as well.
Well, and, and, and I, and, look, I, I understand where this is coming from, even as I sip from my disposable plastic cup. That, I'm sorry, Dr. Davis, I will probably be throwing in the wastebasket as I leave. Here, okay, and I'm not, I'm not doing this to be snarky, I swear I'm not. Here are my concerns about doing this, and it's why, I guess, I would advocate for option number five, which is direct staff with other objectives. I'm worried about loading up, about taking on, um, new issues, investing staff, and legal time to research and prepare more material when we have, we have to focus on some more pressing issues at hand. I just made a list of, off the top of my head earlier today, the things that, that we haven't gotten done from the last year or two years, the police training range, our economic development incentives policy. We're still discussing some things with curbside, um, recycling and sanitation automation, fixing cracks in the fieldhouse floor, um, our emergency radio system that we, we just had the study session on, affordable housing, land annexation triggers, um, addressing the NACA and employers' resource studies in terms of the operations of some of our departments within the city. I just look at all of those, and while I think that the plastic bag ban, I mean, I think it's, it's a, it's a worthy goal, I just hesitate to put that much staff time into something that we acknowledge that the legislature may take preemptive action, um, from our being able to, um, to implement that. So I guess philosophically, I, I, I agree with a plastic bag ban. I'm just not sure from my perspective that now's the right time to be trying to implement something that's really cutting-edge for our region. So I would, the, the, the direct staff with other objectives would be, I'd like to put this on the back burner and start with maybe from a legislative action point of view with the, with our state legislators.
I think I need to retract my statement, we can read the writing on the wall. In light of that, I would encourage you to, to be formal in terms of providing direction.
And I, I agree with the principles, other than the fact our state legislature has typically shown it's not going to step out off the ledge in an item like this unless a lot of cities or counties have already enacted legislation. An example being the, uh, tobacco, indoor tobacco restriction.
Right, and you were at the, you were at the forefront on that one, absolutely.
Now, is this something that the Saline County Solid Waste Committee would have the resources to do this initial groundwork to free up some of the staff time?
If I could offer a couple of thoughts, um, I think they could provide some feedback, but a lot of this is going to be legal administrative enforcement, but, you know, we might be able to take an initial step to identify if we were to go forward, what that might look like in terms of what the effort would be, what work would be needed, and better characterize how much work might be involved, to your point of, you know, who would be involved at the staff level and otherwise, how much work does that represent, and then give you a better sense of how you might want to prioritize that with other competing workload, if, if that's at all helpful. We, and we talked a little bit about Talk Salina, we can flesh out what that process might look like in terms of ordinance drafting, public input, um, and answer the question of who's going to take on what role in this process. We can bring that back to you as a, kind of a brainstorming, uh, response to how to proceed, and then you can decide whether you wanted to commit that time.
Well, they have the resources to bring us public opinion about it, that's where I'm at.
I think we're going to want to be pretty deliberate in our public input, uh, solicitation approach, just so that we, uh, make sure we cover all the, you know, just a typical city commission meeting or committee meeting where there's a public hearing and you invite people to the podiums, not necessarily as comprehensive as what we may have in mind here. Um, so I think we might want to be more strategic about that approach.
Yeah, and I, I have mixed emotions, um, I understand getting the public's input, obviously, but I, I am concerned sometimes about the, the unintended consequences, not knowing exactly what those are until we study the situation. And I don't know this for a fact, but do paper bags cost more to produce than, than plastic, therefore, does it raise the cost at the grocery store or something to the, to the consumer? Um, it does, it is stated here that paper bags may take up, um, larger amount of landfill than, uh, plastic bags. Um, I don't think we have troubles with the whales and seals they talk about, or 20 cows dying per day for a result of ingesting plastic bags, so there, there's pros and cons to both sides, I'm just not sure, again, to follow Commissioner Hodges', um, comments, how much time I want staff invested in this when we have other, um, things. The one thing I would say is as we move forward with our, um, new recycling center or whatever we do there, is I do believe public information and education is an important thing, and, uh, that we just continue to educate people to use the, the non-disposable bags, but, so, uh, those are my comments for what they're worth.
Other comments?
We'll let you decide, Joe.
Well, I think everybody knows how I feel about it, so I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, choose option number four, combination of items one, two, or three of above.
Second.
Been moved in second, is there any further discussion?
Um, for Commissioner Haye and Commissioner Davis, I think, you know, if, if, if that's the route that, um, that you're proposing we go forward, I think it would be beneficial to get pretty detailed with staff in terms of the, you know, the elements of one, two, and three that you would, um, like them to, um, to pursue, especially with, um, in regard to number three with the preferred approach, a plastic bag ban or a fee.
Go along with that, and do we want to focus more on public opinion at this?
I, I think we want to, uh, focus more on public opinion, uh, I think we could delay the discussion of, of how detailed we want to take one, two, and three to another meeting if the motion and the second we have prevails. If that blows staff's mind, do they want to know more right now?
No, in some respects, that's in keeping what I was suggesting. If, if your indication is you're interested in entertaining one, two, and three, and you'd like staff to, uh, come back to you with a public input approach as the starting point of that conversation, we can, we can do that.
Or even to see what undertaking of this magnitude would require, I mean, if it's going to be too much for you to
Sure.
Go off at this time, we can delay it.
Other discussion? All those in favor say aye for the motion?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
So that will pass three to two. Staff, you're directed to, uh, bring us some, uh, some ideas about how we can collect that data. We'll move on to Beaver Development Business, 8.1.
Item 8.1, first reading ordinance number 19-10992, amending the conditions of approval in ordinance number 889280, which vacated a portion of the frontage road located on the south side of East Cloud Street, east of Ohio Street.
Mr. Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, this is a request to have the city commission reconsider or take another look at, uh, condition that was established back in 1988 when a frontage road was vacated. And at that particular time, Central Kansas Foundation was considering the purchase of a building and property at southeast corner of Cloud and Ohio Street, but when they looked at it, it was determined that they didn't have enough, um, space for the needed off-street parking. So the owner of the building at the time, which was security savings and loan, filed a petition on Central Kansas Foundation's behalf requesting that this, um, stretch of frontage road right here be vacated, and city staff reviewed it and recommended that, um, if the request was approved, that it be subject to two conditions. And one of those was the, uh, construction of a new street intersection right here. The frontage road formerly went like this, and so this is, was constructed as a condition of approval, and then there was also a condition that the petitioner install a standard traffic barrier at the west end of the vacated street. And so this, this photograph shows that barrier, and that has been in place since 1988. The second reading of that ordinance occurred, and the vacated right-of-way where you see the cars parked reverted back to Central Kansas Foundation. Central Kansas Foundation has now relocated over to East Elm Street, and Hannabomb Grain Company has purchased the building and property, and they're proposing to relocate their offices there. As they looked at that area to the north of the building, they determined that the area wasn't wide enough to safely or legally have 90-degree parking on both sides of a two-way driving aisle. And city staff went out and measured that area, and we confirmed that it is not wide enough to legally or safely, uh, have 90-degree parking on both sides. They'd like to convert it to angled parking, uh, with traffic entering on the west and exiting on the east. So this is the plan that was, uh, presented by Hannabomb Grain, and what they'd like to do is remove the barricade here, install curbing here, uh, consistent with the depth of these stalls, remove the barricade and have one-way traffic through their lot exiting here. As we noted, staff's primary concern in 1988 and remains, uh, that the traffic barrier does tell the public that that vacated frontage road is not open as a public street, and so so Hannabomb Grain was asked to give some thought to it and submit a plan, uh, for how they can, uh, inform drivers that they're not reopening that street. Public Works staff has reviewed the plans, and they believe that the additional curb, curbing and signage proposed by Hannabomb Grain should be adequate to inform drivers that the frontage road is not a through public street. So, that, uh, condition about the installation of a standard traffic barrier was included in the ordinance that vacated the property in 1988. So, we determined that the best way to amend that would be to amend that ordinance by eliminating that particular requirement to maintain that traffic barrier. So, your first option today would be to approve the attached ordinance, which would repeal or eliminate the requirement to maintain that traffic barrier. You could postpone consideration of this request and, uh, direct staff or the applicant to provide you with additional information, or you could decline to approve Hannabomb Grain's request and decide that the existing barrier should remain in place.
Question?
With that, city staff would be available to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Andrews?
One question, I can't tell by the signs on the, on the north side there, um, on Cloud Street, is there going to be one facing Cloud Street that says, "Do not enter one way"? It says, it shows one way on the sign there, but it's pointing towards the parking areas. It appears to me there ought to be something pointing towards Cloud Street that says, "Do not enter."
Well, the, uh, and if we can maybe go back to the aerial photo with the shading dusting, one thing to remember, um, is that this alley is still open, and so-
Right, but what I'm saying is, see where it's checkered there? There ought to be a sign stating, so someone coming off of Cloud doesn't turn right into that parking lot going the wrong way.
Well, their, their plan was to install a sign here, but the sign would face towards the east, so that someone coming in here would not try to make that turn.
Right, which makes it east, okay, that's what I wanted, to make sure.
Other questions?
So, is that the, that west entrance on Cloud Street, is that, that's still going to be open?
Yes, that is the new public street intersection with Cloud, so this was not there originally. This was constructed in 1998, or 1988 to take the place of this. So, before the frontage road went up here and intersected with Cloud here, the petitioner constructed this new intersection in 1988 as one of the conditions of vacation. The other condition was the installation of the barricade, and so there would, there would not be a change, this would still be the public intersection, they would just like to be able to have traffic enter this area from the west.
And so, people using that west exit onto Cloud Street, they can make a left turn onto Cloud? It's, it's not one of our right-in, right-out?
No, it is, it's full movement.
Full movement.
It is difficult to make a left turn there if the traffic is backed up, because it is quite close to the intersection, but all traffic movements are allowed there.
Again, I believe Hannabomb Grain, based on their type of business, the majority of that parking is just going to be employees, correct?
Yes, it's going to be an office use. They're currently located at Bennington State Bank Building, and they're just relocating their office staff to this location. So, they, it is primarily public employee parking and not, there's not a lot of in-and-out traffic.
I can see be, that being used a little more, as, uh, Commissioner Hodges said, it's a little tough to left turn if you're coming down that frontage road to, to turn left, so I could see that, somebody taking it right and getting a little further to the east, so.
Well, we have, we have discussed with them at some length that they were potentially opening up themselves to have people use that as a cut-through, so the, the plan for the curbing and the additional signage, uh, was there, but the, um, even though in the photograph, there were some cars parked along the north side, um, if you have a car back-to-back there, there's not a way, especially if it's a pickup truck, you can't back it out and turn it, you will run into the vehicle behind you. That width simply isn't there for 90-degree parking.
Any other questions for Mr. Andrews? Thank you. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this item? You're bringing none, we'll bring it back up here for action.
Mayor Ryan, I move we approve ordinance number 19-10992, um, vacating a portion of the frontage road located on the south side of East Cloud Street, east of Ohio.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That will pass 5-0. Eight point two.